Welcome to the Fredericksburg City Public Schools School Board Meeting. We're going to take a few minutes to come out of closed session. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve Certificate of Closed Meeting eighteen nineteen, eighteen dash nineteen dash five for the closed session?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Palmeroy. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmeroy?
Yes.
Next, we have approval of the agenda for this evening. I would like to add an item. Do we have an item to add? Does anyone have any items to add to the agenda? Okay. Following the script.
Ms. Kay? It was the, uh, that you and I talked about, fresh mindedly, the date for the school board goal setting.
Okay, great, yes, thank you. So we want to add an item to the, um, so I would like to add an item of old business for discussion, and it's the rescheduling date for the board's goal-setting meeting. May I have a motion to approve our agenda, including this addition?
So moved.
Second? It's been properly moved by Ms. Palmeroy, and second?
Ms. Holmes.
By Ms. Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October one, twenty eighteen, regular school board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Bailey, and second by Ms. Boyd. Are there any changes or discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. And now for the best part of the meeting. Okay. We'll start with the Word of the Month.
Good evening, Dr. Melton, Chairperson Kay, school board members, families, and invited guests. When I asked to present the Word of the Month, I immediately thought of a small class consisting of six scholars. This class is our junior-level IB Theory of Knowledge class, led by Mrs. They've been working on a pretty special research project that they will share with you as they come forward and present the Word of the Month, thinkers. Forward, please.
Good evening, Dr. Melton, Chairperson Kay, school board members, and esteemed family and guests. We are here on behalf of the James Renault Theory of Knowledge International Baccalaureate Class, and we are hoping you enjoy our video presentation about the significance of being a thinker.
Hi, I'm Martin Grove.
I'm Jack Hardy.
I'm Matt Holland.
I'm Claire Brady.
I'm Corbin Foyer.
And I'm Madeline Weber.
And this is a time to think. What is a thinker? A thinker is a person who thinks deeply and seriously. As international baccalaureate scholars, we consider ourselves to be critical thinkers.
We visited students at Hugh Mercer and Lafayette and presented them optical illusions and asked them questions to discover how they think. We asked them, is this good or bad? Who do you feel bad for? And why do you think this way?
We showed this picture to students at Hugh Mercer. Some students believed that this was a good picture because it was a cute cat, or they believed it was a bad picture because the cat looked sad.
When we showed students at Lafayette the picture of the elephant, we asked them how many legs the elephant has. We got answers ranging from four to twelve. After some time, one student realized it was an optical illusion. This triggered the other kids to also believe it was an optical illusion.
When we showed this picture, scholars from both schools felt bad for the child without ice cream and said they would share with the child.
Following our interviews, we were able to reflect on how thinking changes over time. Students of different ages gave answers, possibly because of their varied experiences. Because of their ways of knowing, scholars from Hugh Mercer gave answers based on their imagination, and students from Lafayette gave answers based off of reason.
We learned that experience and imagination are vital tools for young scholars to develop their identities as thinkers. We praised their efforts and challenged them to build their critical thinking skills and become global citizens.
We've defined scholars in the International Baccalaureate Program as people who think outside the box and push boundaries to critically think. We do our best to work creatively as well as analytically.
Thank you for listening, and keep being a thinker.
Next, I'll present our Optimist Student of the Month for the month of October. Faculty members are asked to nominate a member of the senior class for recognition as the Optimist Student of the Month. The purpose of the award is to recognize students for their efforts in arts, athletics, academics, and community service work. I am pleased to recognize the following senior who was selected for the month of October. William Sneed, son of Mr. George Sneed and Mrs. Kirsten Sneed. William? Congratulations. Thank you.
Do we have any citizens wishing to address the board this evening? Great. Can you state your name and address?
Yes, I am Sam Killian. I am speaking on behalf of the Fredericksburg Education Association. My address is seven one three ones Dorothy Lane Spotsy.
Okay.
But I am a teacher at Lafayette and incoming president. So I was just taking a moment to make-
Before you start, I just want to tell you that you have three minutes, and don't be alarmed if we don't respond, okay? Now you may begin.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment and make the board aware that currently the Fredericksburg Education Association, in conjunction with Dr. Russ and Dr. Melton, have put out a budget time interest survey to all employees in order to help get feedback once budgetary issues start coming up. What are the employees interested in? What is hindering them? What is their stressors? And those kinds of things, so that we can help facilitate the budget and help also, not only help with budgetary issues, but the teacher retention. And so far, we have had really great success, ranging from new teachers all the way up to people from thirty years in the system, not just thirty years altogether, that range from what would be expected, planning time, um, those kinds of things. So I just wanted to make you aware before I sent them the findings to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Um, so on behalf of the board, I would like to thank everyone for coming this evening, and at this time, we will take a brief pause for anyone wishing to leave.
But you're also welcome to stay.
Yes. Normally, we would be at the consent agenda at this time, but there are no consent agenda items this month. This may have been, be the first in my serving on, (laugh) on the board. So we'll move right to action items, beginning with personnel.
Recommend that the board approve the personnel schedules, including the addendum information as shown as of November two, two thousand eighteen.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Palmeroy, second by Ms. Ream. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmeroy?
Yes.
Okay. School calendar?
Before I make a recommendation, I want, uh, want the board to know that we felt important to place this on the agenda tonight for board discussion, not to force the board to vote. Uh, you have a number of options tonight. You can table any recommendation, uh, you can act on that recommendation, uh, which our recommendation is to go ahead and approve, um, an early start. You can delay the early start, or you can decide not to have an early start at all, or there are probably some other options as well. I think that, um, the reason that we would put in here to start the earl, uh, pre-Labor Day opening for next year is so that we can do the, um, advanced work with the State Board of Education to get the waiver, which I think I've explained. We would have to apply for the waiver. The board would have to approve our application for a waiver no later than the February meeting to be submitted to the board. In the past, the State Board has acted on those requests at their March meeting. Uh, so that would give us a couple of, of months to, um, get that pulled together. So I assume the appropriate thing to do is for me to make the recommendation, then you have a motion in your discussion. So, uh, based on that, I recommend that the school board approve submission of a request to the Virginia Board of Education for a waiver for a pre-Labor Day opening for Fredericksburg City Public Schools, beginning with the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by, um, Ms. Holmes. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of discussion.
Okay, um, can someone remind me of where we left off when we discussed this? Uh, I think it was the last meeting?
Dr. Russ made a presentation at the October meeting, um, highlighting the challenges that we would face with an early start, as well as the, um, benefits that we would gain from an early start. And I don't believe that, there was no action taken at that time. It was just for your information.
Uh, has any communication gone out to staff and parents about this topic?
A survey went out. We sent you the results of the survey. Uh, I think we had, it was, it was pretty well, um, there were quite a bit of responses, especially on staff. Dr. Russ, do you remember how many?
Five hundred and seventy-one.
Five hundred?
Seventy-one, five seventy-one.
Five seventy-one, that's total, though, right?
Total survey responses, yeah.
There wa, there was information at the beginning of the survey that each, each person completed that summarized the presentation from the last board meeting.
I think that you did some of the numbers. We had some folks that actually ran the numbers. It seemed to me that there were more agree, strongly agreed than there were disagreed, correct?
No, the reverse.
The reverse, more disagreed with it than agreed, right?
Total-
In your count, what, what?
Hold on. It was a, I thought it was approximately two hundred agreed or strongly agreed, about three hundred disagreed or strongly disagreed, and then about seventy-some were neutral.
Yeah, it was, it was, I have three hundred. I have like about three hundred strongly disagree or disagree.
Right.
And, yeah, about two hundred and five or so strongly agree or agree. And then in the middle, there were about fifty neutral.
And then some of the neutrals did lean, in the comments, you know, they were saying, well, they might have said neutral, but they were like, I think it's a good idea. So then they could be counted with agree.
But it wasn't a hundred.
Still was.
Still would be more disagreed.
But I would say that the, the majority of the, uh, the agree responses, more teachers were agree, and more parents were disagree.
And just so the students know that we hear them, I think that all of the student responses were disagree, so.
Interesting.
I mean, only the ones-
And how, how did the survey get to parents?
It's just on the website.
On the website. Just on the website, so if I didn't have a computer or internet access-
We had, uh, we had hard copies available, too. So it went out in an alert. It was on all the websites. I'm not sure if it was in newsletters.
I don't think so.
But we also advertised it TV.
So timeframe for the waiver, we obviously have to put together our submission.
Uh, which isn't all that difficult to do. Uh, one of the things that we would have to do, though, is the calendar committee is already meeting, and, and right now, the task before them is to, to develop two calendars. One, if it's a, a post-Labor Day start, and one if it's a, a pre-Labor Day start. So that, those things are, are being done right now. Um, and, and I think it's important to mention that all the surrounding school divisions are going pre-Labor Day next year. And, and the other thing, I think there's some, um, misinterpretation or misunderstanding that the summer's only going to be short for one summer, which would be next summer alone.
Right.
And then we would be getting out Memorial Day, and, uh, so they would have a normal length of summer.
My thought is if we're going to change the calendar for next year, that we need to make that decision and put that out to the community now. Like, I would say this is the latest that I would think would be fair to change the calendar.
Well, we won't know for sure until March whether the waiver is approved.
Okay.
Correct?
And I, for me, I'm still, um, to say that the surrounding schools are doing it, again, I go back to the benefit for our children. And, um, what, um, is it, what, what are we not getting by starting after Labor Day that everyone else is getting?
Well, for one thing, um, our, the one thing that comes to my mind is our children would not have access to some summer programs that would start before we got out of school, um, potentially, as the surrounding counties shift to a, a different summer schedule, sort of different summer dates. And they therefore shift summer camps and so forth, um, potentially.
So they wouldn't take all schools into consideration? They would shift because?
Not necessarily. If the majority, and if the summer camp is located in Stafford or Spotsy or so forth, they would probably go with whatever.
Yeah, there's a lot more students in Stafford and Spotsylvania than there are in Fredericksburg.
That's one example.
But my, my thought is more teachers, that teachers are going to leave our district because of their-
So we don't have teachers that are interested in working in school systems that start after Labor Day?
Well, that are different than their, are different than their kid's schedules. So they're, if, only twenty-five percent of our teachers live in Fredericksburg City.
I understand that, but, I mean, your children going earlier may be a benefit to some teachers. You get to stay home alone.
But they get home, they get out earlier, and they have no childcare.
Oh, they need childcare.
They get out Memorial Day weekend.
Before.
Their graduations are usually Memorial Day weekend.
That's what I've heard from teachers that have mentioned it to me, that they want to be on the same-
We won't know it until-
So what do we say, okay, so this, okay?
We wouldn't know officially until March if the waiver's approved, but I highly doubt that the state would not approve it since every one of the surrounding counties is, and, and that we cooperate with the surrounding counties in, in some areas as well, too.
And what was the purpose of the survey if we were not going to, um, support the majority responses? I just need to know.
I think it was more to get comments. It wasn't, it wasn't a lengthy survey at all, but the comments, I think you get more out of the comments-
Yeah.
You do out of a yes-no survey. Um, and, and you also have to look at the fact that there were five hundred responses, and students were given the opportunity to respond. We have, uh, over a thousand students at the high school. We have close to eight, nine hundred students at Walker Grant. Uh, I think that would respond. If you look at, we probably have, we have over five hundred staff. We have, uh, several thousand parents. So it's not a high percentage of, of responses.
No, certainly not.
Well, and, and that's why I asked the mode of communication. I think it's the VSBA that says you have to send a notice out three times before you actually get the attention of the individual. Um, hmm, okay.
We had talked some about the staff, but I wanted to know, like, Dr. Russ, do we have a sense of how many of our staff members are affected by living in another county and having children that go, or, or working here and having children that go to school in another county?
About seventy percent of our staff, um, do not live in the two-two-four-zero-one.
That's total staff.
Right, now, of course, all of those staff do not have children that it would affect, but several of our teachers do have children.
I guess I'm just wondering, like, the, the impact one way or another. I mean, if it's, you know, a couple of teachers, or if it's, but it's also, it's not just teachers, it's staff.
Well, and it's hiring, too, right? You said there was something about hire, like, that we would have-
Offering contracts.
Right, offering contracts. We're at a disadvantage to offer contracts if our school year ends after all of-
Our neighbors will start offering contracts early in June while we're still in school.
But why can't we offer early in June regardless? Do, is it a law that you can't offer contracts whenever you want to?
At that time, we won't even know what vacancies we have because our people are still working.
And our principals won't be available until after school's out to be able to, to be interviewing. The schools who, who are, who finish before us, they're going to be, they'll already be interviewing teachers in their building while we're still in school.
I'm not sure I understand why. I mean, you can set your schedule the way you want. Does that matter?
For, for principals at the end of the year?
Yeah. You have assistant principals, can they go?
They could, but I'm just speaking from experience.
These are the questions I'm going to get, so I'm making sure that I have the adequate-
I can tell you, from experience, there, the last three weeks of school, it's almost impossible to set time in your daily schedule to, to do teacher interviews.
Also, I understand that we have a, I think we, our current policy, we will allow, um, teachers to leave without question July one, July fifteen.
Yeah, that's, and that was difficult for us last year. We, go ahead.
Let me finish my thought here. July one, if a teacher requests to be released from a contract that we've issued, we allow them to go, well, no questions asked.
Correct.
July fifteenth is the drop dead date, pretty much, and then we have to find a suitable replacement. That's typical of schools that start after Labor Day. What we will see is June one for our neighbors to release people from their contracts. So we're going to be a month behind at that point, um, in, in recruiting.
So if I'm hearing the question correctly, it's, it's if, are you trying to say if we, do those, do we have to have an earlier start date in order to have an earlier release from contract date?
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes. People give months, two weeks' notice in the corporate, you know, they give notice. And, and you give notice, you still work through your contract period, but you know you're leaving. Yeah. Yeah, I just don't want us to get, um, stuck on a technicality of that.
We could make ours whenever we want, but that's not going to change that Spotsy might have made theirs June one, which means that if people were deciding between taking a job with us and taking a job in Spotsy, am I right? Like, that they will have already been locked in by June one, Spotsy, or Stafford, or King George, or Caroline. And so we can make ours whenever we want, but they're already taken. Yes?
Correct. We, we offered to a teacher last year, uh, in two counties that started before we do. Uh, we still had five weeks of summer left, and if they were trying to get our teachers with five weeks of summer left, we would have released them. But they were two weeks away from beginning school, so they would not release them, which I understand. But we missed out on a couple of teachers because of the difference in the start date.
I, I guess I'm a little confused as to what has happened in terms of, um, a desire to teach in a certain location. I guess I assume that our recruitment and interviewing skills were around the attractiveness of the, the city and the city Fredericksburg Public School system, not whether or not, um, I've been asked by a reg, another school versus Fredericksburg. I would hope that when we are interviewing, we are selling Fredericksburg more so than, um, the, the fact that someone asked you before another school.
Well, if I'm hearing-
Are we doing it year-round, or are we-
We are. And, I mean, there are times during the year that recruiting is heavier than others. Uh, that's getting ready to start up. Uh, of course, without official openings, we can't offer positions we don't have open.
Right.
Uh, but as competitive as it is right now with the shortage of teachers we have, teachers, they're taking the first job or second job they're offered. Um, and our fear is those are going to be offered while we're still in school for this school year, while the other school divisions are, are done, and they're ready, they're already planning for the next school year.
The bigger issue with recruiting, though, is not when we allow people, release people from a contract. The bigger issue with recruiting, and we lost some teachers this year because the divisions where they live start earlier, and they wanted to be on the same schedule as their children. That really is the biggest issue. So if we're recruiting somebody and they're, and they, and, and we, twenty-five percent of our teachers live in the city, thirty percent of our staff lives in the city. So if, it's a very small percentage. So if we're recruiting someone, and they're, they live in Spotsylvania, Stafford, Caroline, or a surrounding area, and they start early, they may pass us up for a position to go with another school division to be on a similar schedule, or the same schedule as their children.
So it's twenty-five percent that live in the city? I thought it was twenty-five percent that didn't.
No, only twenty-five percent that live in the city.
Any other discussion?
So, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, my thought is, if we're going to change the calendar for next year, I'm going to be a no vote on that unless it's, unless it's decided tonight, because I don't feel like we're giving constituents enough time to plan unless we make that decision tonight. So, I, I, I mean, I, I'm fine, I'm fine waiting another year to do it, but I, I don't want to change the calendar in August. Right, in August of, of this, of, of this upcoming school year, any later than tonight.
Well, we can make the decision to change it, but we still have to get approval from the state, right?
Yeah, but I think that what we're suggesting is that-
We would, in either scenario, we're still going to develop two calendars.
But I think letting the constituents know that as long as we get, I mean, I, I, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we have to vote that way, but, but as long as we do get the waiver from the state, that the plan will be to start August, whatever. I just think if we are going to make that change, it needs to be announced and put out sooner rather than later. I don't know how you all feel about that. That's just the, what I've gotten from my constituents is that they want to know.
Given that, I'll, I'll just bring something up that we discussed at the very first meeting where we talked about this, where we talked about having open forums and, and having people come in and, and being able to communicate different things, some of this, the misperceptions and so forth. Um, and we haven't done that. Um, if we do make the decision tonight, I mean, we don't have the opportunity to do that. And I'm not suggesting we should, should vary based on that, but that is something that we talked about.
Sure, I do.
That's a good point, very good point. Any other comments?
I, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I had a thought with, you know, a, a big portion of the noes or the disagrees were based on August plans for this August.
Yeah.
And I didn't know whether it made sense to sort of almost phase it in, like, do two, two weeks, one, like, move ahead two weeks, and then the following year move that third week forward. I don't know, it's just, it's a thought. Because that's what most of the disagrees were about, were shortening the summer for three weeks and people with, and I know we can be, have a lot of leeway with attendance policy this first year due to, you know, people who have already made.
What you also have to realize is that the people doing the survey don't have access to the information that we do.
Correct.
And so, a lot of it is based on, it's feeling and anecdotal, it's gonna be wet or hot. I mean, there's no consideration of what it does to the academic calendar. There's no consideration on what it does to athletes that have to play. There's no consideration on the, the differences in where staff come from. No consideration of the regional programs that you might be a part of that are affected by those surrounding you. There's no consideration on the work that's been done in the past on folks who have phased it in. That makes no difference, you know.
Correct.
Doing one week, just, none of that. So, they don't have access to that. It's all, and also the fact that starting after Labor Day is arbitrary. There's, I mean, you start here, you start there. So, they don't have access to that. So, even if we did the survey, we were saying, we're gonna let the inmates run the asylum, in a sense. That's probably not a good analogy.
Probably not.
Well, I said it anyway.
I know, I know.
But, you, you know what I'm saying? And so, they just, they don't have that knowledge. So, we're not gonna turn that decision over to the masses based on a survey.
Agreed.
What we have to do is make a prudent decision about what is best for the division. And, I mean, that's what we have to do.
Well, it seems to me like the, the pros seem to be, the athletes, the high school athletes have to be here pretty much August 1st anyway. Most of our standardized testing is done mid to end of May anyway. More preparation time for most of those tested, tests academically. Now, I don't think we've seen studies on this, but logic would say that most of your prepara, if you have more preparation time for a test or for, you know, more instruction time, you would perform better. And nationwide, we're compared against a lot of other schools that, a lot of other states that do start earlier. So, I think the, the biggest downside is the vacation and then the heat of the buses. But I think, and the staffing decision is also one of the big pros. You know, we've had so much difficulty with recruitment that I think anything that helps with staffing would be a benefit.
I guess I wanted to, do we, yeah, I'm gonna ask. Do we, do we have any evidence one way or the other for people who've started earlier that their testing scores are any different?
There, there's no empirical evidence or data that we can find anywhere about student achievement.
Okay.
That, whether it's any better or not, I mean, it does give you more instructional time for those tests that are set in spring, but that's all we know. It's more about convenience than it is about academics.
I know, well, and I guess, you know, for me, when I find myself in the weeds, and I've said this before, is, you know, I try to think about, well, what's best for children? And so, this is hard. It's a hard, it's a hard one because it's not cut and dried.
No.
We don't have, if we're losing staff members because they need the same schedule as their children who are in, you know, different counties, well, that's, it's best for children that we have good staff. Is it best for children to be on really hot buses, you know, in August? Is it best for our athletes that they get to start earlier when the surrounding counties are starting? Is it best that our students, you know, finish midterms before they go on winter break? Yeah, but elementary school children don't really take midterms. So, we are doing that based on, you know, do they do, do midterms in middle school?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, all right, so we're doing that from sixth grade up. So, yeah, it's been, it's been a hard way. I, I don't feel like there's a, there's a, an easy way to kind of like break it on down about what's best for our students.
Doesn't seem that hard to me.
Well, for me, it's, it's the short notice, because most parents who are paying money for vacation homes for the summer and all of that, do it a year in advance. And I'm concerned about the absenteeism because some parents may make the decision to send their students back late. And if we were doing it the following year, I think I'd feel better about it.
So, at the same time, then I guess you also have to weigh, if you, you wait a year to do it, how much does that impact our ability to staff appropriately and have good teachers and so forth, right? Versus the potential absenteeism or potential vacation issues?
Yeah, and because when you don't work in education, your job does not take into consideration your daycare needs and, and your children's schedule. It's hard for some parents to understand that because a lot of parents don't have that luxury.
Right.
So, it's whether or not we're providing that, that to our, our teachers, and I understand that. But a lot of parents don't get that.
Right, but it's not, it's not whether or not we provide it. I think it's the teacher's choice and whether or not we.
Right.
Take advantage, provide an environment for teachers that encourage them to come teach for us, rather, I mean, it's not that we're providing something for them, it's we're providing an environment that they choose to come to when they can choose to go elsewhere. Right?
The, from experiences that I've had and hearing about the other divisions, I mean, we are wise to think through the issue, but I think if you ask other divisions, and maybe you can speak to, to this, Dr. Melton, I mean, what other superintendent and boards have experienced, that's something that we can do at V S B A. It's been my experience that once the shot, it's like jumping in, you know, in, in, in hot water or cold, once you're in it and it's, you've, you've done with it, it's like, oh, why didn't we do this sooner? I mean, it's, it's, that's what, what I have seen in the, in the one division that I've done and in my wife, that it's, it's a lot of confusion and fussing in this, but once you do it, you get through it, it's like, oh, wow, this makes so much sense. Why don't, you know, so, I mean, we have to go through that, but if we ask the questions around the block, I think we'll find that we're basically doing the right thing, if we go in that direction.
And like you said, it's incumbent upon us to consider all of those factors, not just the emotional factor, because that's what you're gonna get right now.
It doesn't matter whether you start it next year or the following year or the following year. Whatever the complaints are gonna be, they're gonna hit you that year. So, you know, phasing it in, you'd get the complaints two years.
Both years.
Yeah, I, I don't think.
Yeah. If, if you, if you just say, let's rip the Band-Aid off and we're gonna do it this year or this year. Reverend Bailey, you're absolutely right. From the people I've talked to, they get, there are a lot of concerns about vacations, there are a lot of concerns, well, there, we listed all the concerns. But once they get started, you don't hear anything about it anymore. And, and I know in talking to people, you know, Spotsylvania, they're thinking, wow, we're gonna be finished with the first semester before winter break. We don't have to worry about bad weather for our exams or other activities in January, because January, February are the worst months. We're gonna have a spring break and we're gonna be done Memorial Day. And the teachers that I talked to say, as I think about it, students shut down on Memorial Day. So, we have two to three weeks after Memorial Day that's dead time, that's very difficult. So, that's what I hear. As you know, Stafford waited a year, they're starting next year, the last one in our, in our region to do that. Spotsylvania started this year. There was a discussion about hot August days, but I think the response to that was we had some hot day, we've always had hot days in September as well.
Yeah.
King George started two years ago.
Yeah.
Stafford will start next.
Next year.
Stafford will start next year. Spotsylvania, this was their first year. And I think the biggest issue for staff was the short summer. Getting summer school in, cleaning schools, doing those things. Oh, and payroll will be a big issue. So, that's another thing, another reason, if you want to do it next year, we need to start thinking about what we're gonna do for payroll now.
I, but, so. Would it make a difference, Mr. Baker, starting if we decided, yeah, we're gonna do it this year versus next year for you?
We'll work through it either way, but depending on when four payrolls in August from the same system or four payroll in August from two different systems, plus or minus, we'll discuss that with the scenario.
Thank you.
We've looked at it from every angle and had the same discussions that you're having right now, multiple times.
And your recommendation is to do it next year? That's the recommendation? Your recommendation is to do it next year?
I think if you're, you're, you're gonna do it sometime anyway. And, and I think I'm on the same page with you. My recommendation, yes, is to do it next year, but if the board hesitates and doesn't know it right now and says can't make a decision tonight, then my recommendation would change in December, it would be for the following year.
Right, okay.
Submitting the waiver, does that mean we have to, if they give us a waiver, we change our mind?
You can change your mind. I'm not sure they'd give you a waiver if you came back and asked for it again, though.
We already got the waiver.
Yeah, and for me, I haven't been convinced. I'm really, could go either way, but I'm just accustomed to see a community come together on big issues. And I'm not, I'm not convinced that, because all I've heard is from staff and a survey. And for some reason, this is not getting the attention that I thought we were going to. Maybe it's communication, I don't know. I'm, I, I haven't heard enough about it. Even the paper didn't pick it up, did they?
They didn't.
They did?
Mm-hmm.
Seems so quiet. Maybe it's the good, right thing to do then.
I know we've, we've talked about, like, the survey and that ultimately it's our decision. I do want to thank everybody who did fill out the survey because the comments were very helpful for me in reading through. And there were things that were brought out in the comments that I had not thought of, one, you know, both ways. So, I want to thank everybody who took the time to, to answer the survey.
Yeah, but, and the survey, the majority of the comments were not to change, right?
They were. Not overwhelmingly.
They went along with the, the other ratio.
We are in office because of majority vote. So, that's, that's, I've always leaned toward that.
Do we have any way of knowing if, like, if one person answered more than once?
I'll have to let technology answer that, but I think some did.
Yeah, but we kept it completely anonymous, so there is no tracking of that, any of that.
Right.
There were several that had the same exact word.
It was an F C P S student.
I know that there were parents.
Strongly agree, you better not, well, you know, and they, and it was like done five, five times. I counted it once, but I don't know, for those who didn't comment, if, if they just said disagree, if it was the same, you know, student.
Janan, I know that there were parents that answered it, that answered it more than once. That answered it as an elementary school parent, as a middle school parent, as a community member, like, that answered it several times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair. I think we've, I'd like to call for the questions.
Okay. All in favor?
Well, what are we voting on? Because we also, the survey was.
We have to go back to, let's go back to the original recommendations. It said the school board approved submission of a request to the Virginia Board of Education for a waiver for a pre-Labor Day opening for Fredericksburg City Public Schools, beginning with the 2019-20 school year. And there was a motion and a second, you've just completed discussion.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Nay. Okay.
You know what that came out about was?
Oh, we gotta do it on.
Is that right? Back to one?
Okay, staff, we have work to do. In other words, Mr. Russ, you have work to do. Okay. We'll make sure that this will be on the topic, on the agenda tomorrow to get more information out to families and staff.
Okay, we voted for the waiver, but what was on the survey was to start two or three weeks early? And we have not, I mean, have we decided then that it's two weeks or three weeks, or?
Well, it would, the way the calendar, the calendar that we will recommend to you will start us early enough so that we finish the first semester before the winter break, which could probably be three weeks.
Like August 12th-ish, right? Like around the 12th of August is what we have.
Yeah, the two dates in question were the 12th or the 19th. So, we'll start at the end of the semester, where Dr. Melton mentioned, and then go back.
We can, we, we probably have a draft calendar. We usually don't bring the calendar to you for approval until March and then, for review and then approval in April. But with the calendar committee already working, we can start, we can get you the drafts as soon as they, they come out, so you can at least look at them.
I just think people need time to plan.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item, information item?
Uh, the.
Career and technology.
C T E update. Dr. Thomas.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Melton colleagues, good evening. Tonight, Mrs. Allison is gonna provide you with an update in terms of our C T E program offerings. But just prior to that, I wanted to give you an update on the work that we're doing in terms of profile of a graduate. Ms. Allison and I have had to work for quite some time on just some of the offerings we plan to provide for our kids in terms of apprenticeships, internships, and so forth. And so, we've developed this flow chart that we'd like to present to you, which depicts the, the process that we intend to follow. So, first, what we intend to do, and this is a plan to go into effect for next school year. So, we would like to start in sixth grade with providing our kids with an overview of potential careers, utilizing Virginia Career View, Virginia Wizard, to provide our kids with some career interest inventory work. Then thereafter, we thought that we would have a career and elective fair. And during this fair, it would afford our kids an opportunity to learn about the career, the elective offerings at the middle school, but also to have practicing professionals in the community that align with the electives that we're gonna offer at the middle school so that our kids not only get an opportunity to see what they could pursue curriculum-wise, but also professionally. Then from there, our students would, will be able to make informed choices about their electives. Then once our students get into sixth grade, through our career investigations class, they will begin developing their career and academic plan. As they progress from there, they will begin to revisit that plan in eighth grade to make certain that their career interests, goals, and aspirations still align with the plan that they developed in, in grade six. From there, our kids will attend an elective career fair, much like they attended in fifth grade, so they can, begin to develop their course of studies path in high school. Here, the kids will begin to develop a sense of a career pathway in line with profile of a graduate. Around the 10th or 11th grade year, and I say 10th or 11th grade, because in some cases our students will undertake the coursework necessary for this in 10th grade. Many of our advanced students, our regular education students, probably would pursue this more so in the 11th grade year. And meeting with like Dr. Melton and some others and talking about how we can bundle some of these requirements, the idea that we're considering at this time is to offer many of the career readiness skills and requirements through our Econ and Personal Finance class. And to do it through our Econ and Personal Finance class, that ensures that all of our students throughout high school will be afforded this experience. Again, some of our advanced students will take that class in the 10th grade year, but this would be the year that our kids get those curriculum experiences in line with Profile of a Graduate, but also be afforded an opportunity for apprenticeships, internships, and the like. Then as they progress from there to their secondary course of study, then they will begin to have discussions with their counselors, advisors, about either pursuing some type of post-secondary study, the application process there, or to begin to undertake preparation for the world of work. Now, some of these items within this flow chart, Mrs. Allison will talk about as we continue through the presentation in terms of CTE.
So this is, I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago with all the CTE directors within the state. The Virginia Department of Education presented. And initially, we just learned about the awareness of CTE. And a lot of people don't even know what CTE stands for. If you say vocational, maybe. Career readiness, maybe. But when you see, when you say CTE, they kind of look at you like, so what do you mean by that? Or even for me, when I tell somebody I teach CTE, what does that mean? So I think initially, we're in a process of kind of changing the mindset of the masses and trying to get them to understand what CTE is. It's not necessarily snowballing students directly into the workforce in terms of making them have academic choices that would only allow them to go straight to work. We would like them to start thinking about that career and technical education is something that gets students both career and college ready. So they'll have the ability to work while they're in school, have the ability to work and maybe make some money before they go to school, or head straight to school, but already have some soft skills and be prepared for the workforce going forward. So that was a big push at our meeting, is changing the mindset, mindset of the population. And also convincing everybody that career and technical education is for all students, not just for the student that's going straight to, to work. So for us, the most effective message is that CTE gives real-world experiences. We're, they have a chance to explore all types of careers and while also learning soft skills to prepare them for those careers. Partnering with the new Profile, Profile of Virginia Graduate, now we're going to be leaning more towards hands-on training with apprenticeships, internships, that type of thing, and maybe some mentoring, where the businesses are coming into the school and giving our students opportunities to learn about their careers. So when we tie it all together, Parents and Student Aspirations for Career Passion opens the door for conversations about CTE. So we have businesses and career people to come in and talk to our students and share their passion about their employment. That gives our students the interest and the, the ability to start researching and doing more. Real-world skills and hands-on experiences obviously are an added value. And CTE is, we don't want to think of CTE as replacement for core academics. We want to think of it more as a blended learning approach. It says, students are usually more satisfied and more focused and more prepared and apt to graduate if they've also been a part of a CTE program. So we're going to talk about career clusters. Career clusters are grouping of occupations and industries that are used for organizing curriculum, which leads to our career pathways and career planning. So it organizes academic and technical knowledge and skills into a sequence of classes. That's when we talk about entry level, marketing, marketing to, computer information systems, advanced commuter, computer information systems, that type of thing. Provides opportunities to involve parents, businesses, and industry and the school community. And this is really kind of our, our new focus, is to have the outreach into our community and have our community businesses come into our schools and have a partnership. So these are the 16 career clusters that are offered. We do not, as a, as a rule, at James Row High School, have all 16 career clusters, though. The career pathways that we have are Career Connections, that's our leadership classes. Architecture and Construction, that is obviously our Carpentry classes. We're hoping to have Electrical coming. Arts, Audio-Videotek and Communications. Business Management Administration, Hospitality, Tourism, that's like Sports Marketing, and Human Services, which would be our Cosmetology.
What do we have in the Audio-Videotek Communication?
Design Multimedia. And we have a new Digital Design class this year. So new courses this year, Cyber, Cyber Fundamentals. Cosmetology III, which was a state requirement, if our students were going to test in the Virginia State Board, we had added hours, so we had to add that extra class, and Communication Systems. With the Cosmetology III, it's kind of a good example of doing the early planning that Dr. Thomas talked about, because these students are having to give larger blocks of time within their schedule. So if they've planned and taken some career interest surveys, and they know that that's kind of the pathway they'd like to take, they need to have a lot of their core academics already finished, so they're ready to give up those extra class periods their senior year. Future courses that we've already been approved for, Cyber Security Software Operations and Advanced Cyber Security Operations. My teachers, that's going to be a little challenge there, is having somebody to teach those. Just because when we're adding classes, we have to have teachers that are able to teach those. Electricity I, II, and III. Mr. Ewing has been approved by a partnership that we established this year with Germana, with the NCC ER curriculum. And he's been approved for the electricity portion. So we're hoping to, I've put an application in to begin electricity for next year. Game Design and Development, Game Design and Development Advanced. Those were big new classes that they were talking about at our conference. And I will put applications in for those for next year, and that may be something that has to be done online. Digital Visualization, which would be the next class from Communication Systems and Graphic Communication. So that's kind of the pathway for that class. So our goals, building our partnership, making it bigger and stronger with Germana Community College, bringing in the youth apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs, and building partnerships with our business communities. So that's internships, mentorships, and job shadowing. Right now, our collaboration with Germana is the Dual Enrollment Automotive, Gladys P. Todd. And moving forward, was it the CNAs, the, that you all talked about last week? And they would actually send their staff to James Row High School and teach there. And the one thing they said, we needed to have a freestanding sink, right? A sink available. So hopefully moving forward- Right. So hopefully moving forward, that's an opportunity as well. Apprenticeships, internships, externships, job shadowing, mentorships. These are all kind of pieces that we're going to work towards within CTE, but that's also going to have to be a school-wide initiative with the new graduation requirements. So we've been working with Germana and the new baseball stadium to possibly have a culinary arts program using their kitchen out there, which was, Dr. Catlet and I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago, which was really exciting. And they were actually excited to work with us and were willing to kind of build their kitchen to our standards that we would need for the academics as well as, you know, their standards for the baseball stadium. Fredericksburg Area Museum, I've met with them, and they're very interested in having our students come down, work for their marketing, their business, volunteer work, DLR contracting, the Fredericksburg Chamber, which we've been working closely with. And possibly putting our students within, and Dr. Melton and I have talked about this too, within the Fredericksburg City School System and having our kids work with culinary, with the maintenance, landscaping, and transportation. So those are opportunities that are right at our fingertips, that we wouldn't have to go out and form necessarily partnerships. And I met with Rappahannock Electric Co-op last week, and they're very excited about starting an internship program. And they're hoping to have that gung-ho starting next year. So we definitely have some opportunities. I'm spending time, I'm hoping to meet with Fredericksburg Rotary and kind of reach out to the businesses and start getting them aware of what we need as a school system and the partnerships that we need to build with them. So that's what we have for CTE. Our challenges obviously are teachers, having enough teachers to bring in the classes that the students are interested in.
I missed something a few slides ago. It said, there was an acronym I didn't get, MAO.
That's a memorandum?
Of Understanding.
With Germana. So kind of what our partnership, what we'll bring to them and what they'll offer to us.
And how, how soon do we think we could start some of the internship?
Well, with the Rappahannock Electric Co-op, we're hoping to start that in February, I mean, excuse me, not February, starting next school year. Fredericksburg Area Museum is prepared. I'm meeting with, we have not, I have not personally worked with businesses to kind of have a contract, you know, so they know what's the expectation of our students and what we know, what their expectations of our students will be. So I'm meeting actually next week with Spotsylvania, no, tomorrow, actually, with Spotsylvania County to see how they're building their partnerships and see how they're putting their students out there. I'm meeting in two weeks with Stafford, Westmoreland, King George, and Caroline. And we're going to kind of all talk together about the best way to form our partnerships for internships.
And Ms. Holmes, just to add also, we, we want to start slow with these apprenticeships, because we want to do quality work. And these agreements that have to be developed, we certainly like to let Dr. Melton see them. We might have to let council see them to make certain that they're above board, to make certain that our kids are, are safe in terms of what we're doing. But I think, you know, Profile of a Graduate is affording us an opportunity to expand our CTE offerings. We know infrastructure has been a challenge for us, but creating these partnerships where our kids can go out or perhaps work with our operations as a division can afford our kids more opportunities.
Yeah. No, I was just wondering too, as far as staffing goes, because I know, you know, for a social work program, you do two full-year field placements, but you have people come out and visit you there, you know, so many times a semester as well. And so I was just trying to figure out like how, you know, how we would staff that, how that, you know, there are lots of things to-
Well, we're figuring through the coursework. We're either going to allow our kids to go out and do a shadowing, internship, apprenticeship, assuming we can provide transportation. In certain cases, we've discussed bringing people into our building and spending time with the students, or utilizing our services, CTE, I mean, culinary arts, perhaps maintenance, just to give our kids some clearer sense of what a particular job or profession would entail before they transition on out of, out of school.
I think I probably like the apprenticeship program and the internships is going to start small, obviously. Andrew Ewing, our carpentry teacher, has done a lot of background work with Germana. And Germana has had successful programs in Culpeper County and Madison County. And they're kind of mirroring that and bringing it to us. This is the first year we've taught the NCC ER curriculum, which is a standardized curriculum. And Germana actually provided our textbooks for that. And then he's going to help us place our students, which is a great thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Very good presentation. Mr. Baker?
Good evening. You have before you the September 30th year-to-date monthly financial report. And as noted in the little item at the bottom, we're restricted still to just summary data for this report. About three or four days after I finished this work, they closed last year's books, so the next report will go back to the line item detail. As you can see, it's still early in the year. We don't have any great variances, negative or positive. I do want to let you know that going forward, because we're changing our account code structure, I plan to change the monthly financial report a little bit to fall in line with that. So the budget presentation will be based on those cost centers I talked about. So each school is a cost center, and then each function within administration will be a cost center. So following that same logic, I'd like to change the format of the, of the monthly report to follow that cost center look, just so it's a seamless transition for you guys all the way across. So I, I would like to invite anyone, we're at the stage now where we're pretty excited about the structure and that it's near finalization. And so if anyone wants to come into the office and, and let me explain how that works individually, I'll try not to talk too long. There's not a lot of exciting stuff in accounting, but this is, this is pretty cool stuff for me. So, so if you'd like to, I'd, I'd enjoy having you come in and, and see that.
Okay, great. Any questions?
Are there any questions about?
Thank you. Okay, we're now at Old Business. And the V SBA Annual Convention will be held on November 14th through 16th, 2018, in Williamsburg, Virginia. All board members are registered to attend. Board members have received convention details. If you have any questions or need to make any changes in your plans, please let Ms. Wright know as soon as possible. Okay, in recognition of V SBA Take Your Legislator to School Month, we have invited Senator Reeves, Senator Warner, Senator Kane, Congressman Whitman, Delegate Cole, and Delegate Thomas to visit our schools. Delegate Cole recently visited Head Start. We, we have also heard from Delegate Thomas, and he would like to accept the board's invitation to visit. More information concerning possible dates will be forthcoming. Okay? Okay. As you will remember, the board canceled the goal-setting session which we had scheduled for September 12th because of inclement weather related to Hurricane Florence. I would like to discuss rescheduling the session. It is more important than ever. So... What are dates that we are available? I would like to have it in November.
Evenings, weekends.
If it's on the weekend, it could be mornings.
That's going to be a little tricky, because we've got the conference and then Thanksgiving week. We're traveling, so I think-
What did we, what night had we planned it for the last time? Was it Wednesday?
It was a Wednesday, yeah.
So the next two Wednesdays, we're at the convention, and then it's Thanksgiving.
Right.
And the Wednesday after is?
The 28th.
Right, if we decide now, I can block it off.
Yeah.
28th, you're going to have a lot of staff in Williamsburg at the V A S C D conference.
That's okay.
Do we need staff?
I, okay, so what do we want staff to do?
Well, it includes myself, Dr. Catlet,
Is it for a day?
Delegate Thomas, principals.
If we moved it to Tuesday, would it make a difference?
The, I won't be here Tuesday.
So last year, what we did was just board members. I don't know if that's what you plan again.
That's where I was getting ready to go. I'm not sure we would really need, um, need you to be present.
I don't think so. If we have it on a day they can't be here, that'll fix that.
Okay. All right.
So November 28th in the evening, what time?
Janan, you have an issue with the evening Wednesday? Janan, you have an issue with the evening Wednesday?
If I know right now, it's not going to be great because I'll have just missed for Thanksgiving, but I'll just block it off, like with...
Six?
Six, yeah. On the Wednesday, is that what we're saying?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Here?
Yes. Okay.
Is there pre-work that we'll need to do? For example, the, the assessment that we have to do every year? We did that ahead of time.
I was going to get with Dr. Melton and Ms. Wright to come up with the full agenda, what we may need. Okay? All right? And I'll get back to you. Are there any items of new business? Let me see. Dr. Melton?
Legislative reception in Spasovina County at the School Board Office on December 6th. And then the, is that the advocacy that you go to, Ms. Holmes?
On January 27th.
27th, 29th. And the SBA has their legislative...
That's January 14th, isn't it? Because we moved, didn't we move the school board meeting?
Any other items? Good of the order?
I know we have a reminder here about the James Monroe High School Coral Department Fundraiser Dinner and Silent Auction on November 10th, be there or be square. Don't have any...
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion for adjournment. So I moved?
Second. That was me.
Second by Ms. Holmes?
I'm always about to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.